All right. I'll call Sue and we'll figure out something. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council of January 23rd, 2018 to order. There being no one registered for the open forum at this time, I would ask you all to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Special City Council Work Session of January 9th, 2018, Special City Council Housing and Redevelopment Authority and Planning Commission Work Session of January 9th, 2018, regular city council meeting of January 9th, 2018, and Special City Council Work Session of January 13th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are all approved. At this time, we have the special honor of watching Jay Hanthorn, our Chief of Police, present the Officer of the Year 2017 Award to Richfield Police Officer Nicholas Ship.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's my honor and privilege to be here tonight. At the end of each year, our Richfield Sergeant select a Police Officer of the Year. This selection is based on the officer's exemplary performance throughout the previous year and the Sergeant's belief that the selected officer demonstrated extraordinary dedication to duty and performance. By unanimous decision, the Sergeant selected Nicholas Ship as her choice to receive the Officer of the Year Award for 2017. The Sergeant's decision was based on four evaluation criterias: leadership, dedication to department, traffic enforcement, and contributions to the community. Officer Ship excelled in all four of these areas. I would like to briefly go over some of these areas that exemplify Officer Ship's performance. Leadership and dedication to the department. Officer Ship responded to the HCMC clinic regarding prescription forgery incident. Instead of just preparing an incident report and passing it on to the Investigations Division, he was able to gather surveillance footage of the suspect vehicle, identified a possible suspect, create a photographic lineup, and obtain formal statements. Officer Ship's extra efforts soon led to the location and arrest of the suspect. Officer Ship also safely arrested a man with a baseball bat by de-escalating a very tense situation. He hosted a toward-zero-death DWI enforcement event and was recently awarded a department commendation for exemplary teamwork during a robbery response. In traffic enforcement, 2017 Officer Ship made 635 traffic stops, issued 345 citations, the most of any patrol officer on the department. He made six DWI arrests, an impressive number considering Officer Ship was on day shifts for the majority of the year and they're hard to come by on day shift. Officer Ship's diligent traffic enforcement efforts have led to a number of arrests, discovery of illegal drugs, and recovery of concealed firearms. Most importantly, his contributions to the community. Officer Ship made numerous contributions to the community by engaging in a variety of community-oriented policing, or COP events, as we call them. Officer Ship logged 49 hours of COP events. He volunteered to participate with numerous events such as Special Olympics, citizen ride-alongs, cadet mentorship, various events at elementary schools, Night to Unite, National Drug Takeback Day, and others. I want to congratulate him on his performance over the past year and on behalf of your supervisors, it gives me great pleasure to present you with the Richfield Police Department Officer of the Year Award for 2017. I just want to mention, he does have his wife Jody, son Colin, niece Peyton, and mom Lisa attending here tonight, so thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, Officer.
Mr. Mayor, I just think, you know, that says a lot about our police force, to have someone that has a lot of initiative to take extra work upon themselves and to be thorough. You know, we're very proud of you.
Next item on the agenda was to be the Friends of the Richfield Band Shell drawing for a legacy brick at the new band shell. I see a representative of the Band Shell Commission. Do you have a hat we're going to draw something out of, Sue, or am I going to have to guess?[334.31][334.31](LAUGHING). Okay. Could you give us a little update nonetheless?
I would be happy to.
That'd be great.
The board for the Friends of the Richfield Band Shell met just recently. It was a week and a half ago. And we're going to be starting a brand-new, exciting campaign, and with the assistance of Edwina Garcia, who was one of our brain thinkers here who helped us to come up with it, we're going to be looking at the brick campaign, and we are looking at encouraging people to consider all of the community builders we have in this community who should be honored. And we don't care if you honor yourselves, that would be great, but that's what we're going to be announcing and going into great detail. And to kick it off, on February 27th, we will be back before you. We're getting new brochures printed, and it's going to be an exciting, fun campaign. So in the meantime, we have a job for all of you and everyone sitting up front and also in the audience. We would like you to think about all the people that you know, your friends, your neighbors, your organizations you belong to that have been involved in building Richfield's community. Think of all the groups you belong to, all the civic groups, the churches, and think of people who should be encouraged to consider themselves community builders and to show their support and to have others encourage them by considering this campaign, because we are going to be really pushing it. So we'll be back on February 27th, and the highlight of that meeting will be the mayor will be allowed to draw the winning person from the box of names we've collected over the various pinfests to get them a free brick as maybe our very first community builder.
So you're suggesting I have to accept deferred gratification?
You might have to do that, yes.
Okay.
But we expect you to come-
Nothing else I can do, so I will accept that, and we will see you.
Oh, good, thank you. And we'd love it if each of you would come back with a list of at least five names of people you know who are community builders in this community, and I can see five sitting right up there already, so think about it.
You know, and there's other, there's people that might want two bricks, like, for example, let's, I'll just choose former Mayor Debbie Gotal. She might want a brick as mayor of Richfield and maybe another one as county commissioner. So, you know, so we want to, we have a lot of folks, like, you know, former city managers, current city managers, Mr. Devich.
You can put not only your name on the brick, but your years of office, or if you belong to an organization, when was it formed? You know, the Richfield optimists in the community since what year?
And there's a lot of retired teachers that live in Richfield that have, you know, I mean, we have folks that, look, Tom Harms, who served on the HRA, yourself, who's HRA and city council, League of Women Voters, I mean, there's just, it's just even Ms. Richfield.
Councilmember Garcia, there are also a lot of students, of former teachers, who could purchase for export for their teachers.
Absolutely. Yeah. And think of all the organizations you belong to, all of them in Richfield, do wonderful things for the community, they're all community builders. I know our League of Women Voters is thinking about having a brick for how many years they've been involved in the community. So put your thinking caps on, and when you come back, or when we come back on February 27th, I'll be happy to go and collect all your lists of wonderful people that should be honored.
Good.
And we hope you'll encourage them and tell them that they should honor themselves. So, okay.
Good deal.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next item is hats off to hometown hits, and we always start with Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'll start off with Minnesota Life College. They are having, well, here I go again, I didn't put the dates. Geez. I do this on a regular basis, but it's coming up in February, and next council meeting, I will mention the date. Anyway, and the Richfield Optimists Club is going to have their chili and salad dinner that's Friday, February the 9th, and it'll start at 4:00 PM and go up to 7:00 PM, and it will be at 7525 Oliver, which is the church, Woodlake Lutheran Church. And that money will go to supporting, it always goes to supporting kid program, which is middle school and high school programming. So we want to certainly support them because they support our kids. The other thing is the farmer's market will begin February the 1st at the Richfield Community Center, and that will start at 4:00 PM, and it's a winter farmer's market, and that'll be a lot of fun. The other thing is we've got the Richfield Fishing Bowl that is coming up Saturday, February the 3rd, that'll take from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You don't have to bring your own fishing equipment, it'll be furnished. There are going to be special prizes, there'll be beverages and refreshments, so we want to take advantage of that. Okay, followed by, we have the youth sports registration, which will take place at the community center, and that's for kids wanting to play baseball, softball, and soccer, and that will be February the 8th on Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30, and Saturday, February the 10th, 9 o'clock to noon. And finally, I wanted to thank Jared, who, you know, for all his work in putting together, we interviewed 50-plus folks that applied for, to serve on the commissions, and he did a really good job in putting that together and making sure that, you know, whatever request we had, you know, he made it a lot easier, otherwise we were easily confused. So, and the other thing, he put together this nice graph that shows, you know, that if people don't get selected for a commission, there's at least other opportunities in the community where they can, they can participate and become community builders.
Just so you know, Jared, she appreciates you so much, she's going to want you to email that out to everybody that, all 53 people we interviewed over the past two Saturdays, okay? So, but no, seriously, we really did appreciate you set it up very well, took care of us, had the rooms all set, and that was much appreciated, it was long days, but very rewarding, so thanks again. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, Councilmember Garcia is a tough act to foul, and I have one, I have one event that she didn't mention, and that's that the League of Women Voters in Bloomington are giving a training on caucusing. Caucusing is coming up, and it's a nonpartisan training, we have a unique process in Minnesota that really is grassroots in orientation. So if you want to learn about your local government, you've heard about the idea of caucusing, but you've never done it, or you feel intimidated, this Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at Bloomington City Hall in their council chambers, there's going to be a nonpartisan training on caucusing. So I just encourage folks, if they feel the urge to be involved, if they're watching on YouTube Local City Councils, they're probably involved at some level, this is another way to be involved in your community.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard.
Just a few items. First, just to follow on Councilmember Garcia's comments about our commission interviews, I just wanted to reflect on that a little bit. I think in my first year on the council, you know, just a couple of years ago, when we did commission interviews, we might have had 10 people that we interviewed, and we had empty spots probably in every single one of our commissions, and to have more than 50 people in our community apply and tell us their stories about why they love it here in Richfield and want to get involved in their community, it was just a rewarding two weekends to see so many folks that want to get involved, and you really hit too many people for too few spots, and so, as Councilmember Garcia said, we hope to get that list out to folks about all the many ways folks can get involved, or get involved in another way, since so many people that applied are already so ingrained in many efforts in the community. And if there's any sense of why Richfield is headed in the right direction, you can see it in the fact that more than any time, at least in the last couple of years, there's such interest amongst our community members of getting involved. So look forward to those announcements for commission appointments later in the agenda. And then, my second item, my hats off, goes to all of the Richfield Public Work Staff that was working around the clock to get our streets nice and clear curb-to-curb. I heard, saw this was the biggest storm we've had locally really since the big storm that brought the dome down, so it's been a while, but as is per the usual, Richfield did a great job, and our folks got roads cleared, and I can't help but always feel a little source of pride when I see posts on social media of our friends in Minneapolis saying, "Why haven't they done my street yet?" Knowing in Richfield that we got it done. And beyond that, a hats off to just all the community members helping each other throughout the streets, whether it's shoveling for their neighbor or pushing a car that's stuck, you know, and in a lot of ways, Minnesotans, we kind of had a tough Sunday with that football game, and I feel like, in a lot of ways, winter and a big snowstorm brings people together like nothing else in Minnesota, and that was, in a way, helping to lessen the blow of that Sunday football game that I'll stop mentioning now. That's it for me.
The football game quit hurting at halftime when I turned it off.[971.32][971.32](LAUGHING). Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
Councilmember Howard, I think you must have been looking at my notes, because two of the three items that I want to mention, you already talked about, but I'm going to reiterate them again, because I really am thankful for what I've been seeing. But before that, I want to just let people know that on Sat, this coming Saturday, the 27th, at 9:15 at the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union, there will be an Affordable Housing Forum, and we will have, that's hosted by the League of Women Voters, the Richfield League of Women Voters, and we will have city staff there present explaining a little bit about what the city is doing in the area of affordable housing. So if you can make it, please do attend. And then, the two things that I want to share in addition, one of the things that I love about being a council member is just interacting with Richfield residents on so many different levels and, you know, seeing how the residents came out and our neighbors came out, everybody, I mean, and on my block at least, people were just like out hanging out, talking to each other, chatting away, people were snowblowing the entrances of our neighbors' homes, I mean, people were just kind of enjoying it and also getting a lot of hard work done, so it was really cool to see that. And again, I also want to say thank you to the public work staff for getting our roads clear, and also with the boards and commissions, it's just an honor to be able to interface with so many residents, people who are coming to us saying, "We're new here," or "We've been here and we've raised our family for several years, and now my wife and I are empty nesters and we're looking for ways to get more involved." But just seeing the passion of Richfield residents to do, to want to do something in their community and sharing the stories and the ideas that they have for Richfield, so many people came with so many exciting ideas. And one of the things that I can't stop thinking about, that I thought about during the snowstorm and during the board and commission interviews, is how much our residents care about their seniors and the senior neighbors that they have. And there's a lot of interest around starting a program, starting a community initiative where, and a lot of residents are already doing it, but finding maybe a more organized way to really make sure that we're checking in on some of our senior community members who might be at home by themselves, or maybe want to, you know, need help with their organics pickup, something that came up today, or they're getting their recycling or trash out to the curb, or plowing their driveway. So that's just something that I really hope we continue to talk about, and as a community come together to support our seniors, so just a few reflections I've had.
I would echo all your comments in regards to the quality of the people that came in over the past couple of weekends and took time off to come in and meet with us on Saturday mornings. And you're right, it went from relatively new residents to people that have been here for a while, all of them interested in the community and feeling it was time to give back and start working forward. One thing about it, and I forgot to mention this to the city manager, we had three or four applicants that had some amazing media skills, and we had talked a while back about discussing and having a work session or meeting with you and council and try to set up a new commission, Communications Commission, probably with Neil Ruland as the liaison to assist in his job in terms of getting the message out of who we are and what we are and what's going on in the city. At the same time, there was some requests or interest, Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, on trying to get all our information out of silos and get it gathered in one spot so we can ask, access it, and we can have data, so we can have some data-driven discussions on what we want to do and how we want to do it. So, and it's like I said, it's something that we, I think I'd mentioned six or seven months ago, but never got around to it, and at least exploring it with city manager and not really being sure of the charter and how we set up a new commission and how we set the parameters, make sure that it's a commission and it's not to take over, step on the toes of the really good IT people that are already here, but to work in conjunction with them and work with Neil, so our communication is even more fine-tuned to the community and make sure we can get out and get all the messages out that we want them to have. So if you can just put that on your list, and then when we have time, let's try to figure out a way to try to move that forward, because we, in effect, made a promise that we're going to set it up, and we've got some people already slotted for the commission. So if we can work, if we can work in that direction, and if I'm off-base, make sure you let me know that too, okay? Had one other, oh, I had to, I didn't have to, I was over at the Best Buy campus this morning, there was a briefing and a commission to discuss the, what we thought was going to be a wonderful 10-day Super Bowl party, it's going to be less so now, but it's still going to go on, there's going to be a lot of people here, but it was set up to bring in some HR people from various corporations and employers to try to give them some hints on how to avoid some of the stress getting around the city over that 10 days, getting in and out, teleworking and a lot of things like that. So I had the pleasure of introducing the speakers and kind of had a good news, bad news to tell them about the city of Richfield. The one thing was, there was a number of people who came in from Stillwater, two hours, two hours and 15 minutes to get here, and I said, "Once you got to the city of Richfield, did you notice anything? Did you notice all the roads were clear?" And they all admitted that, and so then I said, "Well, that's the beauty of the city, they get out and they get everything clear." The downside is, when I got up this morning at 5:00 o'clock and went outside, all the extra snow was dumped right in front of my driveway.[1337.42][1337.42](LAUGHING). So, and I think that is the city manager making sure there's no favoritism anywhere in the city, so if you have any extra loads, put it right in front of Pat's, because I know he loves to shovel, and he's got those big dogs that love it too, so congratulations, job well done.[1353.01][1353.01](LAUGHING). With that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City manager has a consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience at home and here, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and require no further action. Tonight, there are, I believe, four items on consent. Item A is consideration of the approval of a resolution supporting nominations for the Minnesota Department of Transportation's Corridors of Commerce Program Solicitation. Item Two is consideration of the approval to authorize staff to hire Weisington Kogler Group to complete the remaining work for the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Update. Item C is consideration of the authorization of the city manager to execute a site lease agreement with the New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, for antenna space on the Penn Avenue Water Tower. And then finally, consideration on item D, consideration of the approval of a resolution clarifying the repayment schedule for the assessment for removal of diseased trees from private property for work performed in 2016, and that completes tonight's consent calendar.
Move this consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda calls for the consideration of a variety of land use approvals related to a proposal for construction of a new auto dealership at 1550 78th Street East. Maury's Automotive Group has submitted an application requesting approval of a rezoning and planned unit development plans that would allow construction of a new Jaguar Land Rover dealership at 1550 78th Street East. This property is currently home to the Adler Graduate School and Jim Randstad Community Services Center. The property at 1550 78th Street East is owned mixed-use regional and is guided for regional commercial within the I-494 corridor master plan area. The applicant has submitted revised plans since the date of the planning commission hearing on October 23rd. These revisions were presented to the council on January 9th, 2018. Citing significant improvements to the plans, the city council approved a first reading of an ordinance to rezone the property and directed staff to prepare a resolution to approve the requested conditional use permit and final development plans with certain stated stipulations. Stipulations include, plans must include an at-grade and/or improved direct public entrance from 77th Street to a 77th Street-facing door. The maximum height of retaining walls and required guardrails along 77th Street may not exceed 36 inches combined. Site lighting must meet code requirements. Stormwater requirements must be met. Impervious surface requirements must be met, and applicant must explore options for an access agreement with adjacent property at 1678th Street East. The applicant has already begun to work to address these stipulations. As mentioned at the January 9th council meeting, there are instances in which compliance with these stipulations could be exceptionally difficult, impossible, or instances in which compliance would cause unintended, more problematic issues, for example, parking. To address this, staff has included a stipulation that allows a community development director to approve final plans that address the identified concerns of the council to the highest degree practical. Staff and representatives of Maury continue to meet and may have updates to share in the future. There is a wealth of information provided in the staff report in regards to this matter. I'm going to ask Mr. Stark if he had anything to add, and then there's just a couple other items that I'm going to add.
No, just very briefly, you know, we, as the staff report said, since the last council meeting, we've continued to work with Maury's, and the stipulations that the city council put forth two weeks ago, while I don't know that they've been dealt with on a letter-by-letter term, I do believe that they've been dealt with in terms of their spirit. As an example, just one example, plans must include an at-grade or improved direct public exit entrance from 77th Street. It is still not at-grade, but the Maury's folks were able to slide the building to the south to provide more sidewalk space on 77th Street that allowed for a staircase. So now we have a wide staircase, it's very, very nice-looking as an entrance on 77th Street. That's just one example. Again, the other stipulations that were in there, I can't tell you that they're done word-for-word, but I do feel like that everybody has done the best of their ability.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And in the same vein, there was a number of questions raised and answers that we as the council were to provide or to answer in the affirmative to move this matter forward. So I'm just going to read some of the policy and zoning issues that were raised and the result of what's gone on with the additional planning and everything. So in terms of the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan is a vision for a community's future. It provides a framework for land use decisions. The comprehensive plan for this area calls for regional commercial uses that will attract users, users from throughout the Twin Cities, includes specialty retail. The plan emphasizes street-level activity, pedestrian amenities, connections, and public art to unite economically viable uses and create a unique and interesting area. The plan further stresses buildings that front streets provide entries and interesting shop windows along major pedestrian ways and avoid blank spaces along the sidewalks. The council finds that the proposed plans are in compliance with this vision. Zoning, there are a number of purpose and intent statements for the mixed-use zoning districts. The city council finds that the proposed plans adequately address the following desires for these districts. Adapt to market and transportation changes, provide appropriate transitions between uses, promote greater pedestrian bicycle access and connections throughout the corridor and along the strength of the, the length of the corridor, provide well landscaped and attractive public and private spaces with pedestrian bicycle-friendly character and environment by minimizing surface parking and enhancing pedestrian corridors, through reinforcing build-two lanes, getting new buildings to address the street, and emphasize enticing street-level architecture and ensure high-quality architectural design and materials. Planned unit developments are intended to encourage efficient use of land and resources and to encourage innovation in planning and building. In exchange for these efficiencies and superior design, flexibility in the application of dimensional requirements is available. The council finds that the superior design of the proposed project warrants the flexibility offered by a PU, PUD designation. With that being said- With that being said, I see that there, there's a member of the Maury's group here, I don't know if you have any comments or anything you'd like to add to, for the council or the citizens, otherwise I will move an item for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a?
Absolutely.
I really want to say that staff, John and Melissa, have just done a great job in, in really bringing this together and trying to, you know, when we've seen, you know, some areas that we think need, need to be fixed or, you know, or that they've stepped forward, worked with us and worked with Maury's and, and, you know, and done your own legwork. It's been, I think it's been a difficult proposal at first, you know, but I think you've really gone completely all out in trying to make this happen, and you've done it in a very, in a very deliberative way, and I, you know, it just, it takes dedicated staff to, I think, follow council's established policy, and you're really appreciated and I want to thank you. And I also want to thank Maury's group because, you know, you're lucky to be in Richfield because Richfield is a great community, and I think that you will do well, and thank you for working with us to make things a lot smoother and to make it happen and, and for you to, I think, be good corporate citizens, you know, I really appreciate the fact that you've stuck with it and, and worked well with staff. It, it really helps us out in, in terms of building community and building businesses, and we appreciate that very much.
Any other comments?
Just a quick question and maybe a short comment for Mr. Stark. I was very supportive of Councilmember Garcia's amendment and the stipulations, and it's encouraging to hear some of the progress. Just a question, as conversations continue, do you have a plan or how do we envision communicating progress on those plans to the, the public at large and to the council as we continue to move forward?
I, I think first off, the public will be interested to see some of the renderings and, you know, the colorful pictures, so we'll make sure that Neil Ruin gets those on the, on the Facebook page and other appropriate places, and then we will keep the community abreast of, you know, construction progress and those kinds of things. Is there, is there something specific you're looking for?
Well, I guess specific with some of the stipulations, I just want to make sure that if we're approving this tonight, in some ways, I feel like we're leaving the door open on items that are important to the council and to the community, and so, just, I mean, it could be as simple as, as we reach resolution on some of these or final answer, an update before the council, in some way so that we're just publicly communicating where that's at with folks.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that, and we, we will put something on the, on the webpage about the stipulations and then link to it on the Facebook page.
Okay. And just, we talked at length with this issue two weeks ago, so I don't want to reiterate too much, but just wanted to, I guess, reiterate that this is a values proposition for us as a council, and on net, I think that this project adds value to the community. Very exciting piece for our schools and what that, what Maury's is bringing to our schools, and I'm very excited about that, and very excited to see more development on the east side here, and I do believe that in the absence of this proposal, we would see that space empty for years and years, based on the best information we have. It's not without heartburn, I, I still am a little at exactly our existing neighbors there, I want us to continue to do work and explore how this project fits within the neighborhood with EcoSmart, with the apartment folks that live there, I think that's very important, we continue those discussions. And then lastly, you know, this whole process, I think, has been a good one in that we've taken each step and been deliberative and worked to gain more information to, to make the right decision, and I thank staff immensely for their help in, in guiding that discussion in a lot of the ways, but I think it's also shown the need for us to develop a more forward-looking strategic plan with that corridor, with really that whole corner of the city. You know, the, in some ways, the, the guide plan that we were using to explore this corridor is outdated, it needs to be updated. When you look at some of the opportunities hopefully coming to the east side, we need to now start building a strategic, long-term plan so that hopefully, when more opportunities come to the east side, we have more of a playbook that we can draw upon and be best prepared to, to take advantage, and I think this development will help us in that direction, but there, there's work to do in terms of working on a plan and a vision for the entire east side. That is the extent of my comments, and I'll be supporting this.
A couple comments. One thing I would suggest, Councilmember Howard, and I know the concern about, about the stipulations offered by Councilmember Garcia, but I, I think that, that we can take comfort with the knowledge that staff has included a stipulation that allows a community development director to approve final plans that address the identified, identified concerns of the council of the highest degree practical. You and I and Councilmember Garcia and everyone else up here know what that means in regards to the community development director, it will be the highest degree practical, so I think we can all rest, rest assured that, that it's going to get as close to it possibly can with, with the recommendations of Councilmember Garcia. Also, I think I would, I, I would be remiss not to talk about the, the partnership or the ability the Maury's group has in working with other commercial entities within the city of Richfield to put a program together that's really exciting for the school district and the school superintendent, and everybody over there is absolutely overjoyed at the prospect of having some technical training incorporated into the school curriculum and offering well-paying jobs in an industry that, that right now is, is burgeoning with all sorts of new developments in, in driverless automobiles and everything like that, and I think that, that it gives credence. Early on, we were presented with a list of, of commitments that Maury's was making to our community, and I think that it may have been Councilmember Garcia, I don't recall, somebody up here said that, that we, we believe in commitments, we believe that they need to be fulfilled and carried out, and I think that just what's happened so far, there's some other things that, that are pending, and we're waiting until Maury's was, was assured that they were going to become neighbors and, and friends in, in our community. So, from my perspective, what we've seen in terms of adhering to their commitments gives full credence to the fact that they're going to be wonderful members of our community, I'm really looking forward to it. So, with that being said, city council, one or two motions, can I combine them or should I do them separately? Okay. At this time, I would move to approve a second reading of an ordinance amending Appendix One of Richfield City Council, or the Richfield City Code to change the zoning designation 1550 78th Street East from mixed-use regional to planned mixed-use and approve the attached resolution for a conditional use permit and final development plan for a planned unit development that would allow construction of an automobile dealership at 1550 78th Street East.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motions are approved, thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Trautman has item eight.
Item number eight, thank you, Mr. Mayor, is consideration for the approval of a resolution pertaining to the filing of the pay equity report with the Minnesota Management and Budget Department and the approval of a resolution approving the revised general services compensation plan to reflect the elimination of a step in the GS1 through GS6E pay grades. And this annually, we have to, we have to file a report with the Minnesota Management and Budget, Budget Department, and of the three tests that the state requires, the city marginally did not pass the salary range test, and this was because relative to other, other services, other city employees, general service employees tended to be more, more often women, and there was an additional step in their pay grade which delayed the, the bumps in pay for, for all the, the, the general service employees, as I understand, but by eliminating that step, we will give several employees a bump but also come into compliance with the state requirements, which, as I understand, the, the consequences for not being in compliance are, are pretty significant, so the cost of being in compliance relative to not makes this an important, a, a no-brainer in terms of passing. So, I would move that we adopt a resolution pertaining to filling out, or, excuse me, filing of the pay equity report with Minnesota Management and Budget Department and adopt a resolution approving the revised 2018 general services compensation plan.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Pam.
Councilmember Howard?
I have consideration of the approval of the final plans and specifications for the 66th Street, Streetscaping Project and authorizing staff to advertise for bids. Consistent with the city council direction, the capital improvement plan and the city's comprehensive plan, staff is working toward the reconstruction of 66th Street from Xerxes Avenue to 16th Avenue. The city council approved the cooperative agreement between the city of Richfield and Hennepin County at its June 14th, 2016 meeting, which included that the city would lead the design and construction of the 66th Street Streetscape Project, it's a tongue twister, Streetscape Project. This project will complete the corridor's landscaping and street furnishings. In addition to previous public involvement listed under historical context, the open house in the spring of 2018 will kick off the construction season. There will also be meetings with individual property owners impacted by the Streetscape Project. The Streetscape elements will be completed by phases one year after primary road reconstruction. All landscape work is expected to be completed by 2019. And I'll move approve, to approve final plans and specifications for the 66th Street Landscaping Project, CP 41009, and authorize staff to advertise for the bids.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Quick question, I probably could save it, but Kristen, can you tell me what they're doing right down the middle of 66 from east of 35W over to Lindell?
Yes, that's utility work that they're going to be doing.
Are they ever going to be done with that?
Well, that was Met Council's utility work before, now it's Excel Energy and the private utilities moving, following the construction, they're moving, so they'll be out there for a few months.
Did, did we have a discussion about that on, and they wouldn't work together, they wouldn't, they had to go, they had to go concurrent, not consecutive, or?
They always follow Excel Energy.
Okay, so they can't, they can't dig it up and, and do it at the same time, they got to, they got to close it up and then open it up?
It's tough with the contractor and, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, just curious why they couldn't coordinate. All right, next item is all of us. What are we doing? Oh, I think we'd had a discussion about this before, and it's the attendance at the Congressional City Conference in Washington DC, and also a representative at the, as la is, oh, see, now I'm getting all confused. All right, let's talk with number nine first. Nope, that's 10. All right, 10 is discussion regarding city council attendance at 2018 National League of Cities Conferences. Did we had a consensus, or does anybody have time to attend?
In, in March or in November?
Either one.
This one is in November, no. March 11th to the 14th is NLC Congressional City Conference in Washington DC, and we also have the November 7th to 10th 2018 City Summit in Los Angeles, California.
Well, I would be interested in going to the one in, in November, but I don't know that we, that we have to decide on that one right now. Do you know, do you know?
I don't know what the timing is.
Well, the city manager's come, I don't believe that it needs to be decided today. I mean, obviously, as long as we have enough, you know, opportunity to take advantage of early registration and that type of thing, but for the November one, we have plenty of time for that.
Good.
So, we revisit this at a later meeting?
And it sounds like?
You have to do the March one.
For the March, you'd want to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, did you indicate that you'd like to attend the March?
No, not, not the March one.
I would, I'm not interested in the March one either.
It is, it wasn't clear, is this more training-oriented or more policy for the National League of Cities?
I don't think it's training, I wouldn't construe it as training, it's educational.
I mean, it's, yeah, edu, oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry. There's, you know, there are educational kind of presentations, it's networking with other, you know, with other folks who are council members, mayors, and, and other communities across the US, that's basically what it is.
It doesn't appear that anybody has time or an inclination to attend the March 11th to the 14th Congressional City Conference in DC, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, so, we'll set that one aside and then revisit the November 7th to the 10th in Los Angeles, California at a later meeting?
Sounds good.
So, I would, this time, move to, to indicate that a member of the city council will not be attending the March 11th to the 14th 2018 Congressional City Conference in Washington DC, and the November 7th to 10th is reserved for a later meeting.
Well, I have a question, will, will, can a staff member attend the March, March one? Or, I don't know if you, if there's budgeted for that or not.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, that would really, I think the only people that I would consider that might attend, that would be either myself or, or one of the department directors or Pam, and I don't know that anyone's got a huge.
Okay.
And, and there's a policy we have for staff attending out-of-state conferences, and it would have to fit within a policy for each.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, consideration of designating representatives to serve as the 2018 liaisons to various metropolitan agencies and city commissions. I think is, we, we had talked about this, and I believe everybody, I, everybody is, I think there was one suggestion of, of switching liaisons, if I recall.
You, you had just asked me to, to tell you which commissions, we had talked offline, which, which commissions I might take or become the liaison to.
Okay.
And those, those commissions are the transportation, the FOWL, and the 494 Corridor Commission.
Okay, why don't we do this, I know that Commissioner Howard is fond of the Transportation Commission and rather than create a, I, well, I'll ask you, are you?
You know, as I had kind of said to the mayor and I talked to Councilmember Trautman, I, I do enjoy the Transportation Commission, but I would be fine becoming the alternate there and, you know, giving Councilmember Trautman an opportunity to serve as liaison there and gain some transportation experience, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
And Maria Reagan Gonzalez, are you comfortable being moved as alternate?
Yep, yes.
So, what we will do then is make a, a change on the Transportation Commission, moving Councilmember Trautman in as the liaison and Commissioner, or Councilmember Howard as the alternate. Here's, on the 494 Corridor Commission, I'm currently the liaison, Michael, or Councilmember Howard is the alternate. If, I, if you want, you know, if you want to take over, let me ask you this, would you like to move up to be the, the liaison with Commissioner Trautman as the, the alternate? Or, that, that's the one that works or that meets 7:30 to 9 o'clock?
Right.
I think the first Wednesday every month.
Mm-hmm. That would work, I'd be comfortable with Councilmember Trautman taking the lead as well.
I'd, I'd be glad to defer to our senior, our senior council member.
Having a little Minnesotan fest up here.
That means you and I decided, Duena.
Right.
Who should we put where?
All right, I'm, I'm.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry to, to interrupt, but one, one. Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry to, to interrupt, but one, one commission that was not on the list but that we had discussed about, the, or discussed last Saturday was the, the PMAC, the Police Multicultural Advisory Committee and that currently there isn't a council member that liaises or, or has a presence on that, on, on that, that committee. And if it seemed good to the council and to the police department, I would look forward to being a liaison there.
You're so anointed, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And rather than overload you with multiple commissions, we, we're going to test you out with two and see how you do and then maybe go to four next year.
I appre, I, I greatly, my, and my, and my family greatly appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Any other requests or for movement, is everybody relatively happy with where they are? All right, other than the, the changes that we've articulated, I would move that the la, the 2018 liaisons to various metropolitan agencies and city commissions stand as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, these are pretty simple things and I'm getting just all messed up over all of them, yeah. Number 12, item for council considerations, consideration of appointments to city advisory commissions. Simon?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, as other council members and the, and the mayor shared, the only way to describe the last couple Saturdays of meetings is that Richfield and our city has an embarrassment of riches when it comes to talented citizens and residents that are eager to participate in, in our government. And so, a, a hearty and heartfelt and, and deep thank you and appreciation for all our residents and since I've been on commissions, I know folks like Duena or Councilmember Garcia, just to confirm, in your memory, we've not ever filled all, we've had zero vacancies. So this is the first time we've had zero vacancies and we really, we had over 50 applicants and I just wanted to say this briefly before we give the list, the appointments were not simply because people were the most talented, we had, we had, we left talent on the bench. I think we can all agree on that. And sometimes it was just a particular interest or passion that people had that said, well, this is a good fit for this commission right at this time. And like Councilmember Garcia said, there, there are a lot of ways to, to be involved, so we just encourage everybody to keep, keep, continue to be involved, continue on the foundation and other, other opportunities. But without further ado, here are the lists of our adult commission vacancies. For the Advisory Board of Health, we have Rose Jost and Kara Skane and Samantha Downs and Berlin Pierre Lewis and, excuse me, Jeremy Bartels and Nicole Nie. For the Arts Commission, we have Karen Wolverton, Joyce Marie, Tom Etter and Larry Nelson. For the Civil Service Commission, we have Lisa Etter. For the Community Services Commission, we have Ann Bosso, Art Felgate, we have Meg Slindy and Kevin Went. For the Friendship Commission, Mayor Marty Kirsch, or former Mayor Marty Kirsch, Patricia Fixler and, and James Versteg, or Verstig. For the Human Rights Commission, we have Husnia Dent Bradley and Brett Storsa, we have Heather Eastland, Kathy Stevens and Carrie Chilman. For the Planning Commission, Jim Rudolph, Sean Hayford O'Leary and Catherine Quam. And for the Transportation Commission, Jeff Foles, Wes Dunzer and Paul Chilman. And we also had several recommendations for the Communications and Data Commission yet to be determined, but I think those that expressed interest, we did indicate that we were interested in engaging them.
Yeah, we've, we've kept their names. I would move the appointments of all the previously referenced people to the various committees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're all appointed. Next item is the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I really don't have any specific thing to report at this time, other than just a, a couple of issues. One is that we will be setting up a, a morning meeting, I think we've, I think Jared might have sent out notice to you, with our legislators and that's something we want to get done probably in the next three weeks or so. You know, we have items that we'd like to bring up with our legislators and those are things we'll put together on the list, but we certainly would like to know what you feel are important issues to bring up with our legislators. What I'd like to do is put a, a list together and of the items and then get it out to city council to take a look at and tell us if you have any problems or issues with what you see on the list and like to be able to finalize that so that we can meet with our legislators and go through those items. You know, unlike other years where we had specific bills in mind, like extending the Tiff District and, and the underpass funding, those kinds of things, we don't really have anything like that that's really before us right now. There are just a lot of things out there that I think in general have been talked about across the state, some, some that affect us, you know, things like fiscal disparities and how that money's going to be used, you know, just continuing local government aid and those kinds of things. They're very important, but I, I think things that we certainly will have on our list, important things for our legislators to, to remember. Also, the only other comment I'd make is that as you're reading off names of the folks who are appointed to boards and commissions, I, I just think, you know, the fact we had over 50 people apply for the, for the limited positions that were available, that a lot of, a lot of new people, new to the process, have gotten a chance to start getting involved in the local governance process. And that's really exciting because, you know, it's from people who start on commissions a lot of times that end up going through the process and, you know, at some point in time either end up in the city council or may end up in the legislature, you don't know where someone's interests might take them, but it, it whets their appetite as to what we do in local government. And the fact that we've got so many people, again, who are new to the process and want to get involved is, it's just really cool and it just speaks to the, you know, to the energy, the new energy that we have in Richfield, which to me is just fantastic, so, thank you.
One agenda item, I, just to mention briefly in talking with our legislators, I had an opportunity just to connect briefly with our Senator Patricia Torres Ray and we talked about, you know, one of our largest costs for the city that are, that are variable and going up are the costs of new roads. And she was particularly interested in talking with us about getting additional funding at the state level and, boy, that's, that's an agenda item I wouldn't want to, want to waste.
Claims and payroll.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Good deal.